Testing one, two, three. This will be a recording of the regular meeting, Fifth District Georgia State Nurses Association, May 11th, held at St. Mark's Methodist Church.
Our Father, in the name of Christ, we honor, worship, and adore thee, for glad, Lord, God of man, the place that he has to, spend energy and the hat for cause, with thy love, especially blessed mercy, around the world today. Help each of us to make fresh vision of tremendous challenge this day and the days ahead that we dare, and suffer and woes of mankind, include the lesson in cost of courage to live and to serve. Make our paths easy, not easy, and light as the earth to extend, but our eternally, and our wills, and our interests be so directed that we may help anyone, those who are with us, those who come at us, to serve this cause. We make this prayer in thy name.
At this time, we'll have a role call by sections. When your section is called, please raise your hand. I think we can get the hand. EACT Section. NSA Section. General Duty. Occupational Health. Public Health. Private Duty.
You will now have the minutes of the last meeting read.
The regular meeting of the Fifth District Georgia State Nurses Association was held Thursday, March 9th, in 1967, at 4:30 PM in the Woodruff Auditorium at St. Joseph's Infirmary. The meeting was called to order by the President, Ms. Pope. The prayer was led by Ms. Hammond. The order of business was reversed so that the program could be first. The Speaker, Dr. Elroy Tull, was introduced by Ms. Hammond. Role call was called by sections. EACT 13, Administering 31, General Duty 2, Occupational Health None, Public Health 14, Private Duty 14, total 74. The meetings, the minutes of the regular meeting of January 12th were read. One correction was made. The Treasury report was filed for audit instead of approved as read. Communications were read by the President. The report of the Secretary was given by Ms. Rogers. The Treasurer's report for the Fifth District for January was read by the Secretary. Ms. Atkins gave her report as to Executive Secretary. A resume of the special called meeting of February 6th and of the regular meeting of March 9th of the Board of Directors was given by the Secretary. Reports of standing committees. The report of the Program Committee was given by Ms. Hammond. The report of the Membership and Credentials Committee was given by Ms. Atkins. The report of the Registered Committee was given by Ms. Hammond. There were no other reports from standing committees. Report of special committees, there were no reports. Report of sections. Ms. Erv reported for the Private Duty section. There were no other reports. Unfinished business. Suggestions for ballots, Fifth District Georgia State Nurses Association and State Board of Examiners for Nurses of Georgia and for the ANA ballot are to be given to the section chairman. There was no new business. A motion was made to adjourn. The meeting was adjourned at 5:30 PM. Carol Rogers, Secretary.
Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes are approved as read. Next business in order is hearing from the officers. Secretary, Ms. Hale. The next business is hearing from the Treasurer of this place. Now, just the Conant Report for Reddington. Conant Report for the Nurses Professional Register, April 1967, brought forward through March 1967, Membership bill heads, One check returned is $55. Maybe the balance, Disbursements, which include salary, grant, telephone, envelopes, postage sheets, and courtesy bond company. Physician, honest to bond, and District Director of Internal Revenue. The total is $1,378.11. Clearing bank, Checks out $989.26, which agrees with the bank statement. And last meeting in March, I read the audit report for the Reddington. If you remember, it was an error. It was just not put in correctly. The audit changed it. If you remember, the donation we had for the Reddington last year was from a private fund. But they, the way they had it inserted, it was a donation to the community council, but it was not. So we had it corrected. And this is the way it will stand in our report. Donation to Community Council, Aldey Blount Air Incorporated. And then it includes, as it says, grant from private foundation, $5,500. That's what showed in '66. We will have $2,500 that will show this year, but the check was not sent in until January. Yes. I move the reports except. The question is on the adoption of the auditor's report. As Ms. Mace has brought out, this was not handled at our last meeting because of the error. And we needed to have it corrected. Are you ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The report of the auditor's is adopted. Now, you gave us the Treasurer's report earlier on the registry, and it will be placed on file for the audit. You see, we all know where the money came from. But it's in the future. There might be a question. That's the reason why that fella should be corrected so that it will be accurate for a later date. This is the Fifth District Georgia State Nurses Association Report of Examination Commission Statement, year ending December 31st, 1966. The work is done by Touch, Ross, Bailey, and Smart. They're all of the same auditors because everybody. Assets, cash, general fund, Nurses saving account, Life Federal Saving Loan Association, Office Change Fund, Office Change Fund, $25. Total, $5,101.38. Office furniture and fixtures and cost, $1,651.63. Total, $6,753.11. Liberties, uncommitted payroll taxes, Due to Georgia State Nurses Association, Net assets, nurses equity, Total, $6,753.11. This is the income. Dues, Subscriptions, American Journal of Nursing, $261. Interest, $137. Total income, $36,107.38. Expenditures, Georgia State Nurses Association, That's why we don't have any money. Salary, $5,000. Fards, $176.91. Grant, $762. American Journal of Nursing subscriptions, $220. Telephone and answering services, Postage, mailing, and miscellaneous expenses, Entertainment, legal, audit, Entertainment and awards, Section expenses, $195.10. Other printing expenses, Convention, $900. Travel, $200. Payroll tax or insurance, $76. Office supplies and expenses, Secretary's service, $668.50. Payroll taxes, $226.80. Insurance, $76. I missed it, so I went to the bottom and come back up. And so that gives us the total. Excess of expenditures over income, Nurses average balance, December 31st, 1965, Balance, December 31st, 1966, Note, dues are reported as income when collected. The dues of $35,144.75 shown above are composed of $31,882.50 in 1966 and $3,294.75 in 1967. $4,696.25 of the 1966 dues collected. These dues are included in 1965 income. This all excepted the place of power. The question is on the adoption of the auditor's report. Fifth District Georgia State Nurses Association, year ending December 31st, 1966. Are you ready for the question? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The report of the auditor is adopted. And by this action, you have approved the work of your treasurer and the auditor for the year of 1966. The auditor's report for both the Nurses Professional Register Fifth District and Fifth District GSN A will be placed on the table for your review. Next on the agenda is the report of the Executive Secretary, Carolyn Atkins.
Well, for the benefit of those who don't know, we've had a very busy time in the headquarters since January. In fact, during the last seven years, I think this has been the most difficult in getting the ANA forms. We have cleared 1,027 members. All ANA cards have been mailed of the reported to the state. Today, I sent in 32 more. And of course, they will be received in the morning. That would give us a total for the EACT C-section, 115 plus two associates, 244 administrators with three associates. General duty, 223 with one associate. Occupational health, 29. Public health, 133. Private duty, 310 plus two, giving us a total of 10,054 with eight associates. We were fortunate in getting these 32 in the directory. It is completed now, ready for the printers. And all that came in through noon as of Tuesday will be included in the directory. We'll get the checks out to the sections based on their 1,021 plus seven associates as of May 1st. And they will be coming to you shortly. We have not received from the sections, the nominees. We have three so far. So if any of you have them, like to have them included, we ask that you send them to the headquarters so we can get the consent to serve and send them in for the nominations. Other than to tell you, to invite you to come down to the headquarters and that we all, we're going to get caught up this summer. We hope. I'll take no more time.
I'd like to ask how the membership this year compares with last year. What do we make these?
We are just a little bit ahead, but we still need three. I have a membership report from Ms. Wood. We'll still need 300 members to make our quota. You have 1,054. But of that group, you have some dues of the new graduates who paid no dues. And then we have the new graduates of this year who only pay half dues. So that means that when I made the estimate on 1st of May, that we had just less than 1,000 that had paid the $10 dues. We will need 300 more. And when she reads the report of Ms. Wood, I think that she will know what we're going to do to try to make up that deficit of members.
The next business in order is the resume of the meeting of the Board of Directors. Ms. Hale will give us the.
The board meeting of the Fifth District Georgia State Nurses Association was held at St. Joseph's yesterday at Monday, 4:30. The meeting was called to order by Ms. Pope. The minutes were read and approved, and Ms. Pope circulated and read communications. Reports were given by the officers, and standing committees and special committees gave their report. The sections gave their reports of the meetings that had been held since the last meeting. And in unfinished business, the board did verify the referendum vote to change the time and place of this meeting. And due to the resignation of the secretary, the board did unanimously elect Sarah Templeman to fill this vacancy for the remainder of the term. There was no new business, and the meeting was adjourned.
The next business in order is the report of the standing committees. We have some reports, I'm sure, from some of these programs. Ms. Hammond.
Well, first, my members, the activities of the program committee are joint planning with the careers committee. It's been a thrilling and a very exciting kind of experience. I believe we promised one of the finest programs that we have ever been privileged to participate in. We urge that each of you attempt to arrange your affairs that tomorrow will be our zenith day. We have a 10 o'clock session that is going to be repeated at 4:00 PM tomorrow. The capacity of this building is approximately 300. The auditorium, the space subsides a bit. And we believe our membership there's sufficient people to avail themselves of this splendid program. And we urge you to go on all-out effort to assist us in this activity. It is dimensions, dedications, and dynamics is the theme. Autophysis, nursing moves into the 70s, which will be carried out throughout the day. And the clinical forum for the morning has some outstanding people. And many of these names were suggestions made by you. And people have devoted considerable time and effort in the preparations of the program. The 8 o'clock session tomorrow night is equally important. We have several features that a great number of you, I believe, will endorse with great enthusiasm. We have a most outstanding speaker for this, Mr. Norman Shaden, Director of Public Information, Department of Health, Education, and Welfare. He's going to take on theme and use his nursing moves into the 70s. And I'm confident, if you've read his articles and you have an opportunity to see him or speak to him, you know what this door draws. I urge you personally to make every effort to at least have a clunk of forum in your play. And then you can't afford to miss the 8 o'clock session tomorrow night. We're going to honor the presence of the district. And then we're going to certainly give recognition to those young people who are in nursing that will carry us into the 70s in our social order. We do have a large active number of students that intend to join with us. And there are several other splendid features, television, spot announcements, and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond. Are there members of your program committee here, Ms. Hammond?
I believe so. I think Ms. Gammidge is here.
This is Ms. Sherman.
The program committee, I think the members of this organization should know that the program committee, careers committee, public relations committee have been working quite diligently. And it's very, though very busy. How many of you have seen evidence of the fact that it is nursing, that we're involved other than the program? Have you seen any of, heard any of the announcements, the spot announcement, TV show, the newspaper, publicity? Not as on the South Expressway for a new meeting. This is my third meeting today. To the meeting, and Howard Johnson has a big in there welcome sign, a big sign that says National Hospital Week, Nursing Offers Fine Careers. Certainly feel good to see this kind of thing. The volunteer, Ms. Lewis, says that there's a clipping in this morning's paper at Greenbrier Monday. There was evidence that there are people in the organization concerned about nursing, nurse recruitment. And I believe we're sourcing audiences on Saturdays and nights. Ms. Hammond, if you're out in North Decav, Knox, go out and see if the booze are being manned real appropriately. And if not, join the horses. So I do think that your committees have worked and we're seeing and hearing. And if you recall, last year in our annual meeting, we talked about our responsibility that it is, we're a bit tardy, having nurses speak for nursing. Makes you feel really good this week to see evidence that nurses are speaking to society on nursing. If I might add that, Ms. Hammond. I have a big day tomorrow. And hopefully, we can gather on some of the activities. At this time, the printing committee.
I'll just follow up what you've said and give you an idea of how many items have been sent out. We haven't had no official printing. But we did have one pamphlet duplicated of our needs, 2,000 of them. And we also have had offset, which of course is comparable with the mimeographing. We sent every radio and television in our area. And then we had some left over. So the Georgia Broadcasting Company, Mr. the new Executive Secretary said that John Culver, that he would send those out. It came at a time when the Hostile Association were releasing that position paper on education. We have sent not less than 10,000 items from that office in the last two days. I don't mean we mailed all of them because many of them were distributed through the health agencies and farther booths. And we feel that this is one time it was thoroughly covered. But no official printing. It was mimeograph offset.
The bylaws committee will please report some sayings.
Madam President, I want to resume what it wants this read because it was circulated to the membership. If not, then I, by direction of the committee, I move to propose the members be at the audit.
Second motion. All right. Does anyone need to have these read? We can read them.
Madam Chairman, there are extra copies if they did not receive them on the desk right there by Ms. Hale.
For the sake of clarification, these are, does anyone like copies? These are the bylaw changes
Two pages.
that our bylaws would need to be in conformity with the state GSN A bylaws regarding the change in views. And our bylaws committee has audited such changes for us, and they're in print. Everyone have copies to wish to vote at this time? I'll need to have you stand. This will require, change in bylaws require two-thirds vote to approve. All in favor of these changes in our bylaws, please stand. Thank you. Proceed. Please stand. Then, I believe these will adopt the changes in bylaws as soon as they are voted. Didn't have much time. Finance committee. Record, Ms. Ford. Membership and credentials, I believe did have a report.
Is Ms. Wood present? Because if she isn't, I wrote off the reports. Because I think you should know about the work carried on by that membership committee. Very active.
The Membership and Credentials Committee met on March 27th, 1977.
Did I say 77?
We're moving into 77. And approved 119 members, which sets a precedent in the district, the largest number ever approved at one time. The minority being members of the Grady Memorial Hospital staff enrolling through the Grady Payroll Deduction Plan to get us everybody to. On April 27th. On April twenty-first, the committee met at Postalean in Fermi and approved forty-five new and reinstated members, which makes a total of two hundred and thirty-one members approved in nineteen sixty-seven to date. Boiltons have been distributed to hospitals and health agencies, and members of the committee, assisted by interested nurses, are making a direct check with personnel departments and directors of the agencies. All-out recruitment drive has been staged for May, Georgia State Nurses Association enrollment month. Approximately three hundred more members will be necessary in order to meet the nineteen
Thank you, and I'd like to certainly say a plug for the membership committee, too. I probably shouldn't tell this on Carolyn Atkins' own money. As we started into the week, Carolyn kept saying if we can get through the week. And I was fresh in the week, and I was reassuring Carolyn. And I said, "It's a good thing she couldn't see me yesterday, because I probably would agree with her if we get through the week." And now I get here on Thursday at the almost end of the day, and Carolyn's moved us not only through the week to nineteen seventy-six. We made it.
Well, I promoted also Dr. Thomas, if you'll notice another typographical error on your little yellow or pink slip. I had two people, the doctor called me, and he had his secretary, and also Dr. Williams wrote us a note. Dr. Thomas J. Anderson, we had a letter in the file at the same time, so the speaker this afternoon was named Robert, but I promoted Dr. Thomas. He was head of Fulton County Medical Association. So several little errors along the way.
Well, we're going to make it tomorrow, because you already have us into seventy-six.
Satisfied. Madam Chairman, let me tell them about those spot announcements while you're... When I was writing that report, I had three calls within thirty minutes from the spot announcements interested in careers, and that's never happened at any one time.
The nominations committee, the Ms. Sykes, do you have a report? Advisory committee to the registry committee. Public relations, Ms. Hammond.
The only thing I have to add is that Ms. Atkins, the public relations committee's been deliberate for, really, is what it amounts to this time, because she's already on the ball, had everything offset, and all we had to do was deliver it. But all these things, the credit really doesn't go to the committee, but goes to Ms. Atkins, because she's the one that already had it all arranged, and we just delivered a few little things, yes, and the credit belongs over there.[1128.12][1128.12](APPLAUSE).
While you're talking about it, you might as well see Abby's rent window. They're going to use one of the biggest displays that they're delivering and feature visiting nurse. The gas company has our display in the very front window in the entrance. He had promised us a side window, but fortunate is in the front, and we think you'd be interested in the...
They probably don't know where Abby rents.
Abby rents on Piedmont, and they have been wonderful. They let us have all the silver, all the punch bowls, anything in their building that we want the nurses may have. Mr. Coon not only gave us a hundred dollars for the directory, but is very happy to assist.
We have a report from the official publication, Ms. Williams.
The thirty-five AJN subscriptions that have gone in through the district, I feel sure there are good anymore that have gone in individually in the district we're probably here from later. And Ms. Atkins, how much is we get?
We get just as much if you go directly to ANA, and you get it just about three weeks earlier if you renew directly. We don't send them one every week. If we have enough, we do, but we send at least about twice a month. And we get the fifty cents as it comes into the office. But at the end of the year, if you renew directly, they'll send us a check, which they did, I believe, of seventy-eight dollars at the end of last year.
Thank you. The next business in order is hearing any special reports. Are there special committee reports? Any special committees? Ms. Blythe, you have a committee meeting coming up soon, do you not?
But this week, the SAST to meet the thirteenth district committee is limited, and this portion will include several of your board members. Lieutenant Colonel Carl, who is the chairman of the thirteenth district, will have a special program at Dobbins Air Force Base, where the committee will give the privilege during the big evacuation plane that brings the human to Black Lives Day. And also the fifth district committee on disaster, nursing disaster, is presently studying the minutes from the ANA's overall committee, and we will certainly go along with their recommendations of what action should take place in our preparation for disaster at present or in post-communication with ANA, waiting to get the directions from them, because there are several implications in the minutes of the operating committee that made all of us feel at this time, we should not go overboard in planning some activity for the district, when we have every reason to believe that we will be having some pertinent guidelines to follow, and why not go along with ANA's approach to this?
Thank you. Are there other special committee reports? Then the next business in order is the report of sections. Are there section reports?
Charlotte did have very good attendance, and we have an educational program on Ringo Bledsoe with stress on Parateneal paralysis given by Mrs. Burns, and she also said that was only heightened approach, so our next meeting will be on the second phase, which is now. Everyone will stay enjoy it, and hopefully it'll help to join up if second.
Thank you. Other section reports? Mrs. Bass.
Since I've only recently become chairman of the general duty section, I haven't been able to have a meeting so far, but we are planning one for June, just a social get-together, and in November, there will be a new election of offices. Since I'm the only general duty member here, I'm asking you to encourage the general duty members and staff members you work with to join and participate in the association. Help would be appreciated.
Thank you, Mrs. Bass. Thank you, Mrs. Blythe.
I'd like to congratulate you, please. What are you reading today? And we had good attendance, sixty or something, somebody says a room full, but I don't think that'll mean anything. We had a room full of attendance and a lively discussion on suggestions for the nominees. Have you received?
Yes, I have. You have.
And that movie, I think we have.
Ms. Rose Tran, NSA section.
The nursing services administrator section had plasma with fifty-five members present at Grady Hospital today, I wasn't there. At Grady Hospital and had a very nice program presented by their administrator in honor of the seventy-five.
And other reports of sections?
I'm not a chairman, but the EAC, this section had a splendid meeting. Mrs. Margaret Ford presented the role of the associate, great problem at our meeting this past week, it's a lunch meeting, had good attendance, splendid paper presented.
Thank you. The next business in order is unfinished business. Is there unfinished business to come before the members? Did you hear requiring any action?
You see why they got it? They didn't come as you'd like.
Did I say? Now, we move to the next business, so new business, any new business to come before Are there any announcements?
May I tell them that we did hear from Ms. Spurgeon? I'm tired of taking the floor, but I will tell you this, we went back from nineteen thirteen on through with all of our past presidents, and were able to get the addresses of all that are living, sent an invitation. Ms. Spurgeon, we heard from today, she is not going to be here, but she appreciated it. We also had a letter from Mr. Pageant, he appreciated the invitation there, and I believe you've heard from one or two, haven't you, Ms. Dugga?
Back to nineteen thirteen or so.
Yes. And may I tell them in looking over your program tomorrow, that we went through the minutes from the very beginning of the registered nurses club. And when Ella Best came to Atlanta to make a survey some years ago, she stated, and it's in her report, that there are some minutes that are missing. We feel that they are the ones that were sent to First District down to Savannah. We have the minutes from nineteen thirteen of Atlanta Registered Club, and we picked them up from the minutes that we have and went through all of them to find the presiding people. And I want you to know, if anyone's name's left out, we want you to let us know about it, because we checked with Ms. Hanson, we checked with Ms. Vander Brady, and we even called North Carolina, one member we had left out because we didn't see that she'd been a presiding president, we saw where she was treasuring. And Ms. Vander Brady called the North Carolina on Friday night, to be sure, before we went ahead and printed our program. And to the very best of our ability, with the minutes that are in the building, everyone's name has been included. So when you get your program tomorrow, if you do find any omissions or any corrections that should be made, we appreciate it. But we hope that that will be a record, at least be correct.
I do have an announcement that should make nurses feel good. Those of you who knew, just as Mr. Johnson and other health nurses did, know that she died about a month ago. Her sister is establishing an art scholarship at the High Museum of Art and Art Museum in West Atlanta, because she is mostly interested in art. You may see in the paper, and certainly part of the health nurses should be very proud of this art. There will be some about nursing background in the paper. So see, we are getting an art in there.
Thank you, Ms. Blythe. Are there other announcements? If not, then the motion to adjourn is in order. Do we have a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.